Meeting on Tuesday, May 17th will come to order. Is everything on the agenda we're going to hear? Or is there anything going to be postponed?
Everything is on the agenda.
Okay. So, the first item will be the continued public hearings and then we'll go into the discussions. So Rebecca, where do we stand on the Verizon project?
Okay, so as stated previously, the Verizon is seeking a wireless facility special permit in order to install cloud radio access network, soon ran technology on 24 utility poles owned by National Grid in various locations in the town. At the last public hearing, the board requested a direct response to the issues raised by the review consultant and also asked for a list of the poles that had existing guide wires and the consultant has provided both of those that were included in the packet and I can display them on the screen. Additionally, the board had requested a determination by the building commissioner on zoning and the building commissioner referred to a letter he wrote in 2008 stating that the antenna was so placed on an existing structure and that the existing structure was a non-conforming structure and therefore, in this case, the utility pole is the existing non-conforming structure and zoning will not apply.
So, anything else? Do we have information we need to get from the applicant at this point?
He's provided everything that we've asked for so far.
Okay. So, why don't we turn it over to the applicant? Maybe you can just tell us how you responded to those questions and any additional information.
As you know, my name is Chris Sweniarzki. I'm attorney from the claim Middleton representing Verizon Wireless. As Rebecca said, from our last meeting on May 3rd, there were a few items that the board had requested. Mainly, the only issue raised in the isotrop wireless review report was the possibility that we could provide a radiation safety report for all of the antennae that were located lower than 10 meters on the poles. We did provide you that. I had it tabbed as number 19 in the materials that I sent, which concludes with certainty that we're right around 1% of the allowable emissions under the FCC regulations, which was the number that I stated also at our last meeting. Other than that, the board had requested a list of the poles that we are proposing to use that have existing guide wires. I went through and looked at the plans and made that list, so you have those before you.
How many were there?
Um...
Sixteen down 24.
On the screen.
No, I didn't count. Now, you know, as I mentioned before, with respect to guide wires, I have absolutely no control over those. Those are existing and those are there under existing protocols and best engineering practices for the utility company, essentially to make sure the utility poles don't fall down. The equipment I'm putting on there weighs very little, as I showed you all with that antenna that was here before. It's approximately 22 pounds. The guide wires aren't there for our equipment, they're already there. I have no say, absolutely nothing I can do to compel the utility company to take them down, nor does the agreement that we have with the utility company ever prevent them from taking it down. We're really nothing to them. You know, they're required to give us space under federal and state law. We pay them very, very little money, again, under federal and state law, like, we're talking like between $1 and $2 a month. We're not going to stop them taking those down. If they ever plan to move those poles, replace those poles with non-guide poles, we're not going to be in the way. And we're happy to agree to that, too. I mean, we can certainly agree to relocate because that's what's going to happen in reality anyway.
Do they make you get any structural engineering reports on these poles to make sure the poles, existing poles, even though it's their responsibility to maintain them, that they're in good shape? Because some poles I've noticed already have a significant leak.
Yep, they do an in-house structural assessment. Again, that's part of their protocol, so when we fill out an application to go on a particular pole, they will evaluate that. And there's a whole set of standards and guidelines that they use. I'm not that familiar with it, but it's a clearance that we do have to go through.
So, have they done it on these poles already? Or they do it after you get through them?
No, they've done it already. Before we come to any town, we make sure that these are the locations that have been approved by the utility because we don't want to do this twice, obviously. So, we go in, we get our agreement with the utility company first and then we come to the town. So, that has all been completed on all of these poles.
Any other questions from the board?
In the minutes said that you agreed to notify the homeowners, assuming that this is in front of a house. How are you going to do that? How are you going to notify them?
We can send a letter. I mean, if the board has a different way, that would be the common sense way to me, but I'm happy to whatever you like.
No, I just wanted that on record.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. In fact, I think I probably forgotten about that, so if we want to make that a condition, that's certainly fine. It's no problem.
I don't know if it has to be a condition. You said that you would do that, so...
Okay. Well, I will do it anyway, yes. I'm agreeing to do it.
Okay. Anybody else? If anybody in public would like to ask a question or have a comment, your chance to do that. Okay. Hearing none, we will vote this the next time.
So, this is not conditioned on this particular permit, but moving forward, there does need to be a discussion in how we would like to proceed with these permitting, these types of technologies. As Chris had previously mentioned at the last public hearing, this will not just be the 24 locations, this will continue to be more locations throughout and whether or not we want to address that like other communities have in terms of discussing more about maybe changing the bylaw, maybe permitting it, or making it a by right, or doing something that would help move the process forward instead of having to waive all these conditions. But that's a discussion for...
That's a discussion for a different time.
Exactly.
I just, I guess, I just want to see what we do next is we vote on this, but we obviously don't have a decision here, so we'll vote on this. We'll keep it open, we'll vote on this the next meeting.
Okay. We'll draft a decision for that.
I think going forward, it would be helpful to see what happens with these 20-whatever that we're going to see.
Yeah.
So, it's our first experience with it.
Yeah.
And we know what to do going forward until we see how it works out.
Right. Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that's, I think it's good to do 20s, a relatively small number. We'll see if it works and we'll go from there, so, fair enough.
Should I give you a proposed decision? Because I thought I was getting a vote tonight. That's what we said last time, if we're going on...
No, we do not let applicants rate our decisions, sorry.
Okay. Is there anything I can do to help get a decision next time?
You can talk to the planner. We have, you know, a pretty good process for our decisions, so we'll get it in advance. We'll talk about the meeting, we'll vote at the meeting, and we'll be done, so...
Okay. When's the next meeting?
June 7th.
June 7th. Okay. Thank you.
Robert, you might want to, since we have time before we have the decision, to have the notification to the homeowners.
I made that note that we wanted to conduct.
Yeah. Okay. Next item, we have three discussion items on the agenda, and the first one is 1636 Osgood Street, rough and tumble play care, and we talked about this the last time, is my recollection.
Correct.
What did we have? I think we sort of did it as a mini-site plan, but were there, what were we looking for that we didn't have? What was the follow-up?
The only additional information that was requested at the last meeting was for some photos of the site on ground instead of aerial views, so we went out and we took some photos of the building. I'll just wait, I'm on the screen right now. So, this is the front of the building, so Building 48. And then we had...
A little paint would work.
Wonders.
This is the view of, from one of the corners, the field, the triangle. I can pull up the locust, too, where you saw where the outside of the dog park would be, where they would have those individual sections for dog size and maturity. Then we had discussed some of the lighting and fencing issues. Sorry, I couldn't turn the photo this way, but you can kind of see that the lighting needs a little work and the fence is actually, as we discussed, the barbed wire is coming down and needs some attention. This would be the entryway down from Building 48, past Building 49, the stairway down to get to the park on the outside, the outside area. And then the last one is the side entrance where we had discussed where that's where the handicap entrance would be, on the side of the building. And then the only other thing that had come up with this particular project is that there is a project proposed for this site that is going to encroach upon the existing parking plan that they had put together, so they're still going to keep with the same number of spaces, however, the layout has changed. And this is the attached layout. So, they're still going to have the same amount of spaces with the handicap parking in the front, right where that entry doorway that we just looked at, but the parking spaces are going to be moved up and then the others are going to be over towards the side.
Okay. The one comment I have on that is we're putting a handicap parking space, which appears to probably be the fire lanes. Can we get the fire department to review this? Just to make sure, and there's also a fire hydrant there. If they're fencing things off in the fire hydrant, I don't know where the fire fencing versus the fire hydrant is going to be, just to make sure the fire department can review this and make sure that doesn't interfere with trucks.
We can get their input?
Yeah. I don't know if they're going to make that turn with those yellow ones, the five spaces are, that they'll make a turn now down there.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments, questions from the public? Hearing none. I think on this, the level of detail that we need in our so-called decision is less than a normal site plan, but it still should be rigorous. So, we either have two options of holding this off till the next time or making the determination tonight that we waive site plan review and instruct the planner to write up a decision.
We have drafted a decision in your package for review, if you'd like to look at that.
Oh, okay.
We had discussed doing some more conditions as we had discussed at the last public meeting in terms of lighting, et cetera.
So, given the circumstances, we did include the conditions even though it's late.
Oh, okay. So, we don't have a decision to close, so let's look at this and, you know, because I presume everybody's okay with waiving site plan review.
I am, but I have a question. So, where they're going to drive down?
Yes.
There's a little person standing there, I guess. I don't know what that...
That figure at the end?
Figure at the end.
I don't think there's any people in that.
That's when you do a matter.
Where, on the very far right?
Is that where they're going to be driving in?
That's a road, yes, that's a roadway.
Okay, so those patches, is that grass?
Where are you?
See, when you're coming down.
It's all pavement, Laura.
Right here.
To the left is the road.
Right.
To the left of that, yeah.
And then they'll take a right.
Where it's white and gray, that's all black top.
I'm sorry, I was like focusing on the person there, okay.
And that handicap spot is in line with that ramp there, so it's...
Where there, where that used to be actually a through roadway, the solar project will effectively make that a dead end.
So, the parking, the circulation will still remain the same?
Still be the same, okay.
Okay. So, let's take a look at this.
Yep. And required is six, three, three is required, so it's well above what's required.
One thing that we should put in here, I think is similar to what we have on the site plan review, when we do sort of the findings of fact, we have to explain why we're waiving. And there's conditions, but I think what we need to say is a couple of comments that we're waiving this because it, you know, it's sort of an existing large parcel, you know, it's got a de minimis impact, they've showed us enough information. I mean, just sort of explain why we're waiving it.
Anything to discuss?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The conditions, the first one, adequate lighting during the evening hours. Only saying the evening hours, or is it night, too?
Consider night to be evening, but we can strengthen it any way you want.
And what is adequate? Is this exterior, interior?
We're talking exterior.
Okay. Is somebody going to make the evaluation as to what's adequate? Because I sure couldn't.
Well, remember, we're waiving site plan reviews, so I mean, nobody's actually ever... This is one case where I think kind of a reasonable person standard is okay, because it's not like it's going to be usable by a lot of people off the street. I mean, you could say it shall be provided and approved by the planner, I mean, yeah.
That looks fine.
And we're going to add the one that I think Lynn brought up about the...
Fire department review? Yes.
So, we'll plan to get that review prior and include it in the finding of fact, before we sign this. So, it'll be a finding of fact, assuming they approve that location, and if not, we'll look to relocate that as one of the seven across the west and remove it.
So, would somebody like to make a motion in this case to, for the rough and tumble play care to waive site plan review based on the findings of fact and conditions attached?
So, move.
Second, motion made and seconded, and that's as amended, right? That's for discussion. Yep, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay.
And I just want to go back to the beginning comment about everything being heard. There's one item, the executive session. It will be for the executive session approval of meeting minutes only and it will not be, will not include any type of litigation discussion.
Okay, good. And then we'll, well, we'll close the open meeting before we do that anyway, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, this seems to be Osgood Street, right? 1755 Osgood Street, Kettle Pizza request for waiver of site plan review. So, this is new, we haven't seen this yet.
Well, we actually have.
Oh, we have?
We have. The applicant came before the board in April and they're proposing to reconnect the access from 125 and widen the access from Bradford Street, improving the loading dock area and removing some paving and curving near the loading dock. At the last meeting, there was...
Oh, well, Kettle Pizza, that's what they were. I was thinking of the...
So, it's the very last parcel at the end on the Haverhill line.
Okay.
I'll pull up the locust right now.
With Osgood Street. So, at the last meeting, we asked for some additional departmental review as well as some additional supplemental information, and we do have all that to discuss tonight.
Okay. So, can you summarize one of the open items, Rebecca?
So, at the last public meeting, we asked for police department, fire department, and DPW review. Police stated that any construction that would have an impact on the public way would need to have a police detail, but otherwise, they're offset with the proposal. Fire did not have any issues with the proposal and DPW said that they were okay with the proposal. We also notified the butters in both North and Over and Haverhill at the request of the board as a courtesy. Additionally, at the last public meeting, the board had suggested that in order to cut down on the width of the entrance from the proposed 92 feet that they had originally proposed, to cut that down and by being creative with moving some parking spaces and then moving the entrance way a little further down. And the applicant has provided a new proposal that eliminates two parking spaces, moves the entrance way 21 feet and eliminates 15 feet of the existing driveway. So, they're really only increasing the width of the driveway now by six feet as opposed to the original 32 feet.
Yeah, we might want to, given that I think most of the people here are for this discussion, I'd ask, when we get this up, for the applicant to maybe go back and do a, you know, sort of a restart about just exactly what you're planning on doing and answer, you know, the changes you've made and then that way, anybody that isn't, was not here the last time at least has the same baseline as we do, so...
Okay. Good evening, I'm Philip Christiansen, engineer for the applicant, which is Kettle Pizza. George Peters is here with me. He's one of the founders of the company. He brought sample of what they do there, so...
So, I have to tell you, when, years ago, when we did Sal's project, he actually brought a pizza inside.
Jessica.
Nothing like visuals.
Yeah.
Instead of the details on this, first thing I want to cover is, we did talk to Jerry Brown about the use of this. One of your questions last time was, does it fall under the proper use? And as you know, the town meeting just voted to change the zoning to light industrials back in this district. But also, did Jerry get to you guys this afternoon?
He did walk in first and communicated that he felt the use was allowed by rights.
Okay.
So, what it is here is that there are occasionally deliveries and shipments where you need tractor trailers to commit to the property. And originally, when L-Com was here, there had been an access from 125 and at one point, they decided to eliminate that access. They didn't do the paperwork with the state to eliminate it, they just cut the access off so trucks couldn't come in there. So, there is on record with District 4 access allowed to this property. One of the questions that we received from DPW and others looking at this was, well, shouldn't you get approval from the state on 125 before you come to us for anything? And the answer to that is, the state refuses to give any approvals until the towns approve projects first. I've run into it in other towns. I do all the review and new report for their planning board. We have a project before, if it's a 60-unit project, they're proposing access to Route 1, but DOT will not review that project, and so the applicant has to spend all the money to get through the planning board, and the planning board could approve it and DOT could still turn it down. So, it's a bad situation, but that's the way the state works. So, we will, if this moves ahead, then meet with District 4 to get that access opened again. And so, that's one of the three things we're going to do on site, is open that access. We also have to create a more level area by the loading docks, and that's shown on the plan. And that's just with these tractor trailers, we just need a more of a level area where they can set. If you see, there's a shaded area right by the loading dock there that we're going to repave. Right now, it's a little out of level, so that has to be fixed.
That's the piece in the upper left corner?
Yeah, see the entry door, label?
Right in the middle, right where the crossroads is now?
Right there, yeah.
Okay.
That whole area has to be regraded. And in doing that, we're changing somewhat, there's, if you go to the existing conditions plan, you'll see that there's a, yeah, the island, see that little grass island there is different on that to the left of the entry door. If you see that, we're moving that, we're eliminating some of that to give a little bit more room for the trucks to swing. So, if you go back to the proposed plan, you can compare that areas. We changed that little area where we removed the pavement. And then finally, what we want to do is increase the radius for trucks turning, leaving the property and turning down Bradford Street back to 125. And one of the reasons is with the tractor trailers, because they're big and they have a large turning radius, it's difficult for them to leave without, without causing problems to people across the street on the Haverhill side of the road. So, by increasing that radius, making the driveway wider here, we give them more opportunity to straighten the trucks out before they go out by Bradford Street. So, that's the main thing under consideration here is that, as you know, you have a regulation with regard to driveway width at the property line and it's part of the zoning regulations, and we're increasing this to wider than what's in the zoning regulations.
So, the proposal, if you don't see it, in the white area at the entrance would actually close that area up more in order to, with a really dark shade over there, the 21 feet, would be opening up that end of it?
Yeah, you see, there's a removed pavement, there's an arrow and there's a, I think 16 feet, is that what that reads under that?
What are you going to do with that 16 feet?
Just be grass.
Okay.
Pavement comes out. So, then that, because we're increasing by 21 feet at the property line, we're decreasing by 15, so, or 15, I'm not sure. I think it's 15?
I think it's 16.
16, okay. So, there's a difference of five feet in added width.
Is there space, once the truck starts to come out, where it could complete going all the way onto Bradford Street? Or would it, if it gets held up by traffic on 125, would...
Oh, is there enough queuing room?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's back far enough. I think, do you have that over?
Yep, we're bringing that up right now.
Or maybe just the other end of this drawing, let's see it. Oh, great. Yeah, and if you pan that down a little bit more, if you could.
Or up. I think it's like this, just, yeah.
So, you can see 125 more?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, fine, good.
So, when the trucks enter, they go up, they'd have a little bit more room to maneuver so they could back in, and when they leave, they follow approximately that path.
And you said two trucks a week, maybe more?
Depending on the season, we don't see some trucks for a few weeks, depending on the season.
Well, what's your max?
Season, we probably a couple a day. It does, it really depends.
Hours of delivery?
Never after, for pickup, never after 4:30. That's our, you know, we close at 4:30, so the pickup window and delivery window is, you know, 8 to 5, but usually everything comes afternoon time and before 4:30. They're usually in and out, Monday through Friday.
Any other questions from the board? Laura?
Is there a reason why you can't just use Osgood Street for both entrance and exiting?
Yes.
Okay, what is it?
You can't, once you back into that dark, you wouldn't be able to turn back into the parking lot, but there's a length of the tractor trailer that comes.
So, now, I know you've patiently waited, so if you do have questions, you can come up, if you can give them, yeah, your spot filled, that'd be great, thank you. And come up if you could just identify who you are and we'll see if we can get an answer to your question.
Well, I'm, okay. My name is Susan Coppenito and we, obviously, we're all residents of Bradford Street. Not that I have questions, it's more of comments. We currently, I don't know if you're aware, or you probably are aware, of the traffic issues currently on that street. We have trailers, tractor trailers that are, come up and down 125 that are not supposed to be used in 125. They're supposed to be going 133.
Are these to the waste treatment plant?
No. The road, like the Brooks School, like food service trucks will go up and down the street.
Okay, yeah, if you could just put person, so, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
And like I said, we have young children on the street. You talk about like the delivery of, you know, one or two trucks a week. I don't believe that. Tractor trailer trucks, these are large, what are the size of the trucks you're talking about?
Okay, yeah, if you could, yeah, have all the discussion come through us, it's just a little easier that way, so...
Yeah. The size of the trucks, what are the size of the trucks?
Probably the same size trucks that the New England Tractor Trail School uses across the street. the street.
And those are huge trucks, huge. The other comment I have, you mentioned something about the police department, said that this was acceptable. I, myself, have been in touch with the police department about many issues on the street. I can't imagine that.
But we're, the, what we're only dealing with here is the, this specific property and impact on this specific property, not the overall issues. I mean, a lot of people have, I grant you, there's traffic issues on Bradford Street, there's traffic issues on Johnson Street, there's traffic issues on a lot of streets, there's not an easy solution to them. If somebody is doing something that's not legal, we have some flexibility. If somebody's moving too fast, we have flexibility, there's other, maybe road common things we can do, but it's, it's really more of a general town thing. We, what we're trying to do is to focus on the impact of this specific.
And the impact would be huge on our neighborhood.
Okay.
Huge.
So, how far down the street do you live?
Right now, I walk this street, I, what are we, like, at what?
68, so, six houses up.
Okay.
I walk this street every day and practically get hit by cars every day. So, again, I know I'm focusing on something else, but the impact of having tractor-trailer trucks come in and out of that entrance is, is huge. These two girls here, you want to step up? They actually live right across the street from...
Yeah, if you could, if somebody else wants to.
So does L-Com not utilize any tractor-trailers?
No.
I just have a couple of questions, I think that she has talked about the impact. I'm Sarah Brash, I live at 2 Bradford Street, so I'm the very first house, right on the corner. And I think one of my biggest concerns is living there, I see all the accidents that happen, all the time. It's a huge, it's a visibility issue, it's also a problem because there's a stop sign that everyone runs, that's in North Andover, but then they go into Havrell. So I just didn't know if we could possibly do some traffic studies from both North Andover and Havrell on the intersection before we introduce tractor-trailers into the mix, just because visibility-wise, it's, it's a big issue.
So are you saying the, it's the stop sign that's the corner of 125 and Bradford Street?
Yes, yep. Right there, so if people are coming up to the stop sign, some people are, because there's a Y. So some people, if they're turning on to 125 and they're taking a left, they'll take the Y left, other people will go straight, and there's a telephone pole there. So there's already a visibility issue, but if you're introducing tractor-trailer to that, especially if they're going to the left, I'm just concerned about the visibility, because people pull out and they just get...
So the, the issue right at the corner of the, are you saying there's a utility pole?
Yeah, in the middle of the island between the Y at the end of Bradford Street, there's a big utility pole.
Is it possible to see that?
Right at the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't...
Do you see that, the utility pole on that island, right on 125?
Oh, right there.
It's up at the very top.
Is that?
Is that it?
This here, or there?
Right there, yeah, right at the top.
Right at the very top of the screen.
Where's the stop sign?
You can't see it, it's cut off.
Oh, it's up further.
Yeah. There's really two, there's one.
So the street goes like this, and you can turn, like, right where the trees are?
Yep, or you can go straight.
Right, you can straighten turn?
Yep.
Is that, taking a right, is that a road? Is that a way?
Yes, there's, there's a Y there.
That doesn't look like it's paved.
It is, the trees are just blocking it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Can I pour it up on this?
I'm going to show it to you, too. I've been showing it to you the whole time.
That's a good traffic design. This is, but they shouldn't have that too. They should only have one.
Yeah, so there is, there's the problem.
Dave, you broke my computer.
That's, that's the problem. That's the part's the problem, yeah, this is fine, because it's, but it's that part's the problem.
Peter, is this what you're projecting, just so we have it?
Yeah.
Similar image, because we have to put this in the record now, so I just want to make sure we're looking at it.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking, okay, that's perfect, that shows it very, very well.
Thank you.
I mean, the, the, the problem here is the Y.
It's the double.
It's the double out here, that's, that's the thing that's the problem.
I mean, there's multiple problems that I don't know if I'm going to solve tonight.
I have no idea.
The pole is in North Andover. The pole's in North Andover.
One entrance is North Andover, the other one's Havell.
Well, the stop signs are both in North Andover.
Down their front yard.
Yeah, the, stop signs are both...
Down my runs down their front yards, the whole streets.
The roadways are in North Andover.
So the problem a lot of times is, as far as, I'm speaking for a pleasing standpoint, I don't know, but they run the stop sign, or they can't see at the stop sign, and there's an accident, there's a jurisdiction issue. So, because the stop sign is in North Andover, but once they go through the intersection there in Havrell, which is why I was saying, if we do do a traffic study, if we can do that from both towns, would be beneficial, because it's kind of split between the two.
Yeah, I mean, this is typically, from a planning perspective, this is from the planning board, we do traffic studies when the volume impact of the specific project is sufficient that it might change the level of service, it gets into sort of technical sort of things. This, I think the circumstance is a little bit different, because the, the big issue here, I think, is the externality, it's the way the, the street goes here, which is a broader issue, and it's not something that's solely related to this property. The problem, you know, arguably would exist regardless of whether this was all woods there, or...
And I understand that, and I think, you know, if what they're saying is, is true, and it's only a couple trucks a day, it's not going to have a major impact, but is there something that's going to hold them to that? What if they have multiple trucks all day long coming out? Then it is going to create a traffic, traffic problem, traffic flow problem. You know, a year from now, they could say, oh, well, we're already in, you know, let's up our amount of trucks and deliveries, and we, I feel like, have no say in that, at that time, if it's already been approved.
And I have one more comment. I know that there have been traffic studies done through the North Andover Police Department, so you may want to look into that.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm, who did we talk to in the police department, because?
Lieutenant Gray's the one that signed the letter, I believe.
Yes, I submitted it to you.
Okay, can we go back to, I mean, it's, and see if they're planning on doing anything more broadly with this intersection? It does, it may not be on our, the planned stuff, that they're planning on working on, or they don't perceive this as one of the bigger issues, but...
You can ask them as well, DPW, if they have any type of real improvement plan.
Yeah, yeah.
See, we never allow the, the park, it seems, to go right off to the road like that, either across the street, which is a problem.
You mean where the houses are? Yeah, that's not North Andover though.
I know, exactly, that's, that's a bad, because it's compounding the...
You're right, yeah. Yeah, because you have to back out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, which is partly what makes it more complicated, if there's only going to be one road.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it might actually make it better for those houses, because then they could, you know, if you, if you eliminated that and just deeded the land of the people that live there, you would, you would have, they would have a driveway. But who knows if that would ever happen, so. Can you put the image back up where you had the figures of the truck?
I have a question about that, too. As far as the trucks backing up into the loading dock, are they going to be beeping and making noises? I know it's going to be during the day, we have a lot of first responders that live right in that area that sleep during the day and work at night. So that would be disruptive to their lifestyle as well.
I'm sure when you back up that truck, you have to, it has to beep, doesn't it?
Did the tractor-trailers have to have reverse beep?
I'm sorry.
Do the tractor-trailers have to have the reverse beeps on them, when they're in reverse backing up the lurch? I believe they do.
They didn't feel annoying.
Yeah, we think that that's... So we take the, that would be yes, but fair point, so, yes.
Yeah.
Identify yourself, and tell us where you live.
Paula McCorr Andrioli. I live at 15 Bradford Street. My parents actually built in 1957, so I could write a book about the street, I'm the longest resident on Bradford Street.
But it wasn't a dirt road when you lived there, was it? I mean, not that one, but further down, it is a, it used to be.
It was a dirt road, and the Mazarenko Farm was there, and there was Chad, Chadwick's Stand at the bottom of the street, so I go, I go way back, in fact, I think we were classmates at Kittredge.
Really?
Yes. Mrs. Donovan.
Mrs. Eldridge?
And Miss Eldridge, yes. So...
All home with you.
In any case, firstly, I'd like to say, I don't believe that Havrell residents of Bradford Street were notified.
And why not?
I mentioned it to Sue, and a little bit of a team effort notifying the Havrell side of the road. So there might have been, you know, there might not even have been the attendance there is tonight. My concern is the traffic in general on the street, which has already been addressed, but with the, there's continuous traffic on the road. It's a, a road, in my opinion, that isn't sufficiently wide to be, wide enough to be a two-lane street. When they recently repaved it, they put a, two double lines on the road. So you could have four cars going up, three cars coming down constantly. There will be absolute gridlock at the bottom of the street when the tractor-trailers back in and out. There'll be a lot of congestion on 125 at the bottom to take, for the truck to do what it has to do. I'm also concerned that this might encourage other large tractor-trailers for, for driving on Bradford Street, and maybe using that as an access onto 125, so the traffic could be even worse. And then, if business goes well for these gentlemen, again, they could expand, they could have more trucks, and by then, their foot is in the door, and we'll have nothing, we'll have nothing to say about it. So I'm concerned with the noise, the traffic, the danger, it's going to be very dangerous. There's, I almost got in an accident on the water, the water tower a couple days ago, you could be coming down, people go very fast off 125, coming off 495, and you can almost hit head-on, and it's...
But if this, again, if this property were not here, you would have most of the problem. Like, granted, there may be an element with a, a certain number of tractor-trailers that are not there today, but everything else you talked about still exists today and would exist regardless. So some of, my point is, some of your comments are related to this property, some of them are more broadly put.
More broadly put, yes, but there is going to be congestion at the bottom of the street, with people coming on and off of Bradford Street, waiting for the tractor-trailer to, to exit and enter. It's, it's going to make more congestion at the bottom of the street, and backing up on 125.
I don't know if that building is really large enough to handle a continuous flow of trucks.
Well, why do they need such big trucks? Can't they have smaller trucks and go to a distribution area? I mean, is it...
The trucks that L-Com uses are much smaller, they were the more compact trucks, she never heard them.
I don't know what that, I mean, this is a more fabricating job, right?
Yes. Our products come in from around the United States, and we just assemble it, we don't do any manufacturing. We just do assembly. Boxes and stones and steel come in from different parts of the country, and we do final assembly of that box. That's all.
And, does anybody else have a question?
First, I, I never heard of Kettle Pizza until I Googled it today, it looks really cool. You guys, someone move in, you'll loosen tech over the other guy?
Yeah, really. Right next to Jessica Brett, you know?
Plenty of room.
Good synergy.
I, I too live on the corner, we're in a duplex, Sarah and I, and I moved there, my name's Gina Jangleberry, I'm at 4 Bradford Street. Moved there about a year ago, and I'm currently, every time a tractor-trailer drives down 125, my whole house shakes. It shakes. Last night, I'm watching TV, and the glasses, you could hear them hitting each other. And never mind a business using tractor-trailers right in front of my house, driving right in front of my house, I, I can't fathom, honest to God, if I knew that was part of the deal, I would have never moved into that house. I don't have children, but if I did, that would be another issue. I don't, I personally would rather not hear the trucks beeping out in front of my house, I don't care how many times a day. It's just, it's my home, I want to be comfortable in my home and relax in my home. My question is, once that tractor goes onto Bradford Street, is it taking a left or a right on 125?
I do, which way they're going, I guess.
How do they take a right on 125, when people are flying down Bass Rogers Springs?
Well, I mean, it's the same way, you would be...
No, if they're, if they're on, that orange truck is on Bradford Street.
Yeah.
So when it goes to Osgood, is it taking a left or a right?
If it took a right, it would go toward April.
Correct.
It could do either.
And that would be a lot of accidents happening over there.
Well, it's a little bit...
Very dangerous, I think it's a race.
Alfred Street probably, at least once a day.
As a shortcut. Yes, you and everybody else.
Get my truck?
Yes.
I'm just saying, people fly down.
I make a right, and it's, that's the easiest thing, I would be afraid to try to make a left, frankly.
I've almost gotten to so many head-on collisions, they're going to work in the morning, it's so bad.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, again, and, and in terms of the peak traffic, is it typical, sort of what you would expect of morning and evening and rush? Where are the peak times?
I know, it's all day.
It's constant, because they come down 495, they come out of Forward Green and turn up the road.
But I mean, it, my point ends up being, is it from 7:30 to 9 o'clock in the morning, or the more than at 11 o'clock in the morning?
I think it's all day long, I mean, I can't, I can't...
But why does it matter if there are people sleeping during the day, and there are people sleeping during...
But there is traffic all day long.
But my point ends up being is that, and this is where, you got to help us, because we're dealing with three or four issues here, we're actually doing the selectments work a little bit here, and, you know, because there's issues outside this property, but I'm, I'm trying to get a sense, because so many talked about queuing. Well, queuing makes a difference during peak loads, but we know, from common sense and from experience of any traffic study we have ever done, is there's a morning rush and an evening rush that's heavier, there might be a, like a mid-afternoon rush if you're right next door to a school or something like that. But the point ends up being is, if you can give us some idea of when the peak loads are...
Well, I bet the traffic report can tell you, because, I mean, the, the police report can tell you when all the accidents happen, so I'm going to do a quick analysis as to they happened during this, and I'm not being, I'm just being honest, I'm not home.
Rush hour is bad, but Sunday, there's traffic all day long, and there's, no one's going to work on a Sunday.
But, I mean, if the traffic's already bad now, adding an 18-wheeler, that can't go as fast as a car, you're backing up more traffic, it's...
Well, that's actually going to slow down traffic, and actually, in all honesty, if you slow down traffic, you will have less accidents, I mean...
Well, it's going to cause just congestion.
It'll cause congestion, but you don't have many accidents.
It's shaking of my house, I don't want to feel my house shake anymore than it shakes with the tractor-trailers driving by.
I mean, it's a residential street, I don't think we need to have tractor-trailers.
But fundamentally, if you want, uh, traffic off of Bradford Street, you don't want traffic on Bradford Street, the only thing you can possibly do is make the other section of the road go back to a dirt road, but that's not, never going to happen, so, like it or not, you're going to have, people are going to do that, and unless you put, you know, it's virtually impossible, you could possibly put some restrictions on commercial vehicles through the neighborhood at certain times during the day, but be, and not just...
Are tractor-trailers allowed to drive on residential streets?
Of course they are.
Yeah.
People get deliveries and...
Don't they have to pay if they're going to drive on, do they have to pay a certain amount? I mean, I question whether they should ever have put that building there to begin with, in a residential...
It's, it's, it's probably been there at least 40 or 50 years, I would think.
No, it hasn't been there 40, 50 years.
It hasn't been, I know it's been more than 30 years, so...
It hasn't been 30 years either.
Ultimately, it's a residential neighborhood, and you're talking about putting tractor-trailers in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, any other new questions, if you can come up?
Hi, my name's Carrie Vesquez, I live at 62 Bradford Street. Just a few questions, and I do want to reiterate all the traffic concerns, because I do have two infants, three and one, and I am concerned, I don't let my kids play in the front yard, as it is, regardless, without tractor-trailers, trucks from a new company going up the street,[1725.32] trucks from a new company going up the street because it is a very, very busy street. A few concerns I have. Is there anything that's going to be preventing, if you look at this diagram, when trucks come in from 125 and they kind of loop around, is there anything that's gonna prevent them from taking a right to go up Bradford Street? So let's say these tractor trailer drivers are not aware, or they don't wanna pull down. Is there anything that's gonna prevent them from going up Bradford Street?
You mean out, exiting through, like further up?
To go all the way to 133. Correct.
Okay. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, so that's one issue. If this is just gonna be a turnaround, then is there any sort of signage that we can put? Or can we educate drivers? Or is it gonna be the same drivers, or is it different drivers? So driver education is a concern of mine. If we just have... Is there gonna be any knowledge for the drivers to know that?
Well, I mean, there's two parts to it. One, you would know better than I, but by exactly how often commercial vehicles, large commercial vehicles, ride on South Bradford Street all the way over 133.
Quite often.
If indeed they do, I think you could make a legitimate argument that they shouldn't be on that road anyway because it's the ultimate country road in North Andover. So we could see, and we probably have to get the police department... We could ask them if they have any appetite for no right-hand turns for commercial vehicles out of the property.
Thank you for considering that. Along those same lines, traffic coming out of that street... I leave for work in the morning at 7:00 AM with two kids in the car, taking a left-hand turn to get onto 125 from Bradford Street is very difficult. I just drive an SUV. I'm not a tractor trailer. So that's at 7 o'clock. 8 o'clock, the traffic is still pretty heavy. And I come home around 4 o'clock, and if I wanna leave, I can't take a left-hand turn. It takes me a little bit to sit there. So my concern, along with other residents of the street, is what is the backup going to be like trying to take a left-hand turn if you're waiting behind a tractor trailer? How long will it take for a tractor trailer to get to pull onto 125? And again, is there any ways that we can tell the tractor trailers to not take a left-hand turn, that they must take a right-hand turn? So that's another question.
But that would make them go down Bradford Street.
They're already going...
Take a right on 125.
To take a right onto 125. Yes.
So then they'll be sitting in front of my house, idling, idling, shaking everything in my house.
Either way.
Either way, my house is still shaking.
Okay, okay.
Snowy weather also is a concern. I mean, there's lots of accidents. That street's on a hill, so the base of that street is very icy. So if that's something that, you know, if we know that this tractor trailer's entering and exiting, you know, these... I'm just voicing our concerns because we have these concerns anyway regardless of tractor trailers coming in and out. So it does get very icy. And I had the same issue about queuing in front of people's houses and what the impact would that be on the residents. So I also question that. And my final question would be, when Alcomm was there, there was just smaller box trucks that were backing into the loading dock. So I'm questioning the size and the ability for a tractor trailer to back in. I don't know if you've ever seen this loading dock, but if you look and looking at these drawings, it's hard to visualize how a tractor trailer would actually be able to back in without blocking Bradford Street and still stay on that property.
I classed one license in Illinois when I was going to college, and I mean, it isn't that hard. You'd block... You'd shut it. You'd block off Bradford for a little bit.
But look at that... There's not that much space between that loading dock, and if I'm correct, you're not changing any of that, or you are?
Which garage door is the loading dock? On the left or the right?
Further away from you, Peter.
The smaller one towards 125.
Is the loading dock?
Yes.
Okay. What is the garage door to the left?
It's an entrance into the warehouse.
And the loading dock, the door to the right, that's an elevated loading dock, so when the truck pulls in, it's level with the floor.
Correct.
Okay.
And has there been any investigation with the people that are delivering the stuff, whether they can use smaller trucks? Or is this the first time that question's raised?
We don't, when we order for delivery, they send a truck that's in the area for that particular company picking up the supplies. We don't request a large truck, big truck. They bring the truck that is for the loads going out.
I mean, I just know, when I was living in New York City, a big moving truck was bringing my stuff from Chicago to New York, and it couldn't come into New York City. So they had to go to a place, move into a smaller truck, and then bring that into the city and bring my stuff. Is that... I mean, are they doing that potentially for other deliveries, and they could do that for yours? I don't know.
I mean, it's... Part of the problem ends up being is that if it makes it, I'm not gonna be able to do business by doing that. It's, you know, it has consequences.
You've got two union drivers.
So are there any more questions? I tie you off your comments. I mean, this is... It's a difficult issue here. There are certain things that we can do, and there are certain things we can't do. But I think we listened carefully to what you said. I think what we will do is, let's go back to, I think, the police department. I think that's really the biggest single piece. And, you know, I'm even thinking that it might be a good idea to go actually out there someday and look and see what's going on out there and, you know, do it in conjunction with people, whether we do it on Saturday or sometime during the week. And maybe have the police department out while it happens and somebody from DPW out where it happens. Because I think part of what's going on here, you know, is it's on the site, and if the site's not handled well, it could make the situation worse. But there is the problem, the already existing problem that's here, so...
Can I ask the applicant another question?
Yeah, sure.
Could you put the schematic back up with the diagrams of the trucks? So two questions. First, is that the only loading dock in the building?
Yes.
And it's the only opportunity for a loading dock in the building?
Yes.
Okay. Second question. You're removing or you're adding pavement... You're removing grass area and adding pavement where the upper yellow truck is shown, right? To give you a better turning radius. Have you considered, if you're already taking that removal action, instead of removing the grass area and adding pavement to give a better turning radius onto Bradford, have you considered removing such that you would have an adequate turning radius and removing a couple parking spots to get out onto 125 instead? I understand that as currently shown, you don't have a radius to turn out onto 125. My question is, did you consider whether or not you could reconfigure that lot to allow for a turning radius onto 125 rather than a turning radius onto Bradford? And it may be that you've considered, and you don't have the dimension. I don't know. I'm just asking.
Are you suggesting within the same curb cut or two curb cuts? No.
For going onto 125? Well, you're already modifying the curb cut to come in off 125, and so part of the question is to also allow going out onto 125. Just a question.
Okay. We're not modifying the curb cut. It's already there. It's been there since when the building was first done. So we're not... All we're doing is from where the darker shade is coming off 125 is making the grade again where it's easier for trucks to come back in.
Okay. But you're not adding that angle where the dotted turquoise line is. That already exists.
Correct.
Okay.
The reason we're... And we're very sensitive. We wanna be good neighbors. You know, we hopefully made it for a long time. I wanna be very sensitive. When we went out to look at it, to repurpose the building so it's not vacant, is that by taking out that, if you could put the slide back up with the overhead of what we're gonna do for the trucks would be helpful. Well, you see the second yellow truck turning up that way. We did that so the truck, when it exits, really minimizes pulling up straight. It will have to go out onto the roadway slightly so it can back into the dock, but we removed that pump there so it wouldn't go straight across to the homes. So we'd have a better turning radius to get back out onto Bradford Street. We looked at it for several months on which was the best way. And I have been there when the truck, moving truck, the Alcomm was there, and it was a 75 footer, which is the longest trucks they make, it is sleeper trucks. And that backed all the way into the dark without the nose being onto Bradford Street. And you can check the dimensions, because I was there, took pictures of it, because I wanted to see how that gentleman came in off 125 and put a 75-foot long hauler rig into that loading dock. And these are professional drivers. They drive tens of thousands of miles a month to do it. And I can assure you, the tractor trailers that will actually keep going the slowest will be those coming in and out of that driveway. I've been there and watched for hours tractor trailers go both directions on 125, and they're going a lot faster than 5 miles an hour they'd be coming out of our driveway to get onto 125. And I can assure... With all certainty, it's very unlikely the truck that comes to pick up our product, what they're gonna be looking to do is either to get back going into North Andover or going back to the connector to get on 495 north or south. These are trucks that have to get back to distribution centers. There's really no reason for them to try to take the right-hand turn to go up Bradford Street towards the water tower, 133. I can't guarantee that, but I... With some certainty, saying that they're gonna wanna be getting back out into the highway as soon as they can.
Just as another comment, John. I take the point about large trucks versus small trucks. I am glad that the applicant is showing the worst case of the largest trucks. It doesn't mean that they will always be largest. I would have a bigger concern if your diagram was showing a little tiny truck and not telling us that it could be a big truck. So at least, you know, you're being transparent, and it's good for us to all see what the worst case is. So, you know, thank you for doing that.
Hey, John, a couple of things commented on from the comments that were made. You know, it was mentioned that the folks in Haverhill particularly live in a residential, residentially zoned district. Unfortunately, that abuts an industrial zone district in North Andover. So you always have that sort of conflict, as you know, in a residential neighborhood abuts an industrial one. The other issue is, when George approached me on just doing this little modification to the exit, was that, you know, that building can be used as it is without that modification being made to the driveway, in which case we wouldn't be here. Right? And you could still have the same kind of trucks come in, but it's more difficult for them to maneuver, but particularly, it's more difficult for the people on Bradford Street because without that extra turning radius, the trucks are getting pushed over to the other side of the street, to the Haverhill side of the street when they exit. So from our point of view, we're trying to improve the situation that we have for the neighborhood versus creating something that they wouldn't have if this doesn't get approved. If this doesn't get approved, the trucks are still gonna come in. There's still gonna be an operation there, but it'll be harder for them to maneuver to get out.
We try to be proactive. We've been doing facility-type of work and things like that with large trucks for a while. And now in the last five years, we've done it. The reason our business has grown is, you know, we make good product. We wanted to be proactive in making sure that when the trucks were there, that we're very sensitive for the neighbors across the street. We wanna be good neighbors. And that's why I had Phil show exactly what was gonna happen without anything, any surprises. So we do appreciate input.
Yes, thank you. I think it was a cordial discussion. I think everybody... I think people make good points, and we'll do the best we can. We're not dealt the best hand here, unfortunately, but I think we appreciate your willingness to listen and the willingness, people to...
There's also the comment about that intersection, particularly the people going right into Haverhill. And you see that situation a lot when you have a street that isn't a 90-degree angle. You know, the 90-degree intersection, people have to stop.
They have to stop. Right.
Once you have that, where they can just lead off to the right.
It is interesting because virtually every non-90-degree angle in North Andover's been changed to 90 degrees.
Right. So if an improvement were to be made here, that would be...
That's my point, is that I think outside of this, that there's probably a need to do something like that. And maybe this'll precipitate that, although it won't be the exact same time. I wanted to get back to one point, and I know I'm gonna put you on the spot too much, but again, roughly, what is the frequency of deliveries? And I know it's not exact, but, you know, what are we talking, a band of...
Certainly, our peak time is April, May, and June, you know, leading up to Father's Day.
Yeah.
You know, we slow down in July and August, and then pick up in the fall again, probably October to Christmas time.
Yeah.
Other times, we get... Most of our pickups and deliveries are from small FedEx, box-sized trucks that will be going to the larger garage overhead door. Majority of our boxes do ship out by UPS or FedEx trucks. Our supplies come in by the larger trucks, and then our larger orders go by the 18-wheelers. So...
But again, and I'm not trying to pin you down, but I'm trying to get some idea of the range of, I mean, or... I know you said, and you wouldn't be limited to it, but is it two or three a week, or what? I just don't remember what you said before.
No, at least... No, a couple... It could be a couple a day, and sometimes more.
Okay. It's your peak time. Do you have any flexibility of time a day?
We have... Because we close at 4:30, we require pickups between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m.
It must take a certain amount of time to load a tractor, a full-size trailer.
Well, I hope we're loading full-size tractor trailers all the time. Usually, it's usually...
Oscar for Fox, right?
Usually tractor trailers will, you know, drop off four to five pallets, which we unload quickly. They don't wanna be there any longer than they have to, or we load them accordingly. You know, I don't think we've ever put more than 10 or 12 pallets on a truck at a time. And that's... That is rare.
So 10, 12 pallets, half an hour loading time?
Probably about that.
So you are limited by the... You only have one loading dock. So even in the best-case scenario, business was booming, you couldn't put more than 16 trucks in a business day, but load them all the time.
Well, yeah, especially with they're picking up, it's only a three-hour window.
Yeah.
And they do... And that's pickup time. We ask for pickup and deliveries. Now, some do come earlier if they have an empty space.
But my point a little bit was that do you have any flexibility if we said, "Look, we'd really not wanna have one of these large trucks come before 8:30 in the morning"? Is that a problem?
No, because we don't open till 8:30. We don't... We wouldn't accept...
Okay.
We wouldn't have anybody to unload it at that time.
Okay.
Because we have to.
But as you get more prosperous.
Well, if they get more prosperous, they move to a bigger building.
Yeah. No, we... And usually, the smaller trucks deliver loads early in the morning. That's been customary for our business. I wouldn't expect that to change.
So I would, just because I think we've been... We're at the point where I think we could finish it off tonight. You know, again, I do appreciate everybody's cordial approach to this. I think what I'd like to do is, I'd like to see if we could finish it up next time because as fair is fair. But I would like to see if we could do something out on site if you didn't mind, and it might address some of the larger issues. But let's see if we can get the, you know, the police department out there and DPW out there just to look at the general area.
Including the void? You want to specify?
Well, yeah. I mean, let's... Either we do it, if it's a problem getting them on Saturday, we'll do it sometime during we'll do it sometime during the weekend, you know.
That's fine, okay.
One of the things that we can do, even if we do this, is one of the things I sort of like to do because, you know, when you do site plan reviews, you can never figure everything out, is maybe, you know, put our conditions in place and then say, let's do a review in three months or something and, you know, we could revisit and see if there's any specific problems and issues, something like that. I don't know if anybody else has any other sort of ideas of things we might be able to figure out how to make the situation better.
Just, I didn't, I'm not sure I got an answer to my question as to whether you ever looked at the geometry of being able to turn out onto 125.
I did not, I did not.
Yeah, and just by looking at that plan right there, you would have to remove, you would have to make that driveway even larger going out onto 125. And I'm just guessing that that would involve probably much more extensive work with the state than...
I appreciate, I appreciate your response to it. I mean, when I look at it, I can understand why you're not doing it. I just wanted to ask what your thoughts were.
You know, it would certainly be something to look at. And I know that the, those parking spaces that are required up on top there would have to be removed.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if that would cause another problem with something with the building because we didn't have enough parking spaces. I think that was a requirement to have so many parking spaces with that size building.
Okay.
Okay, just as far as the mailing, we typically do currency mailing, regular mail. We did send certified mail, so we noticed the typical 300-foot radius to the property. So if somebody was outside of 300, they may not have gotten it. Some people said they did receive it, so it was mailed.
Okay, good, okay. And we will be back at our next meeting, which is...
7:00. 7:00.
Yeah.
And if anybody has questions or comments, you can call the planning department. Gina, Rebecca will be glad to talk to you if you wanted to follow up on anything.
For my wife who will be interested, what does that sound like?
Res...
Particular kit?
Big kit.
109 adults. Last one.
If anyone spoke tonight and did not sign, would you please sign with a sure address for the record, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to do a discussion at 1600 Osgood Street, Osgood Solar, because I believe we're going to have an application coming up, and this is a preview, which is a good idea.
So, so this is a discussion related to our recently filed site plan review, special permit application. On Friday, May 6, that application was received for a 3.6-megawatt ground-mounted solar system on the property of 1600 Osgood Street. The scope of the project would include some demolition of old buildings and storage tanks on the property as well. The application was filed under 8.3 Site Plan Review. You have a copy of that application in your packet. A conceptual plan or a sketch plan was provided, and that's the amount of information at this time. So there is supplemental filings that are required for this application. The applicant, I believe, hopes to have that, oh, there it is. Okay, so that, at this point, we'll get this in the record and I'll file, and we'll file it with the truck's office as well.
Okay.
But the, the application, two pages, was timestamped in. The application itself is filed on A3. The applicant, do you intend to speak to Site Plan and Special Permit or not?
No, thank you.
No? We'll all have to broach that. We've provided a draft legal notice noticing this as a special permit under A3, which our bylaw does require the applicant, you have the application there of the opinion that Site Plan Review does not require a special permit?
Yes, I see. It's Site Plan Review, and we're going to apply the standards we always do for Site Plan Reviews, so...
Our bylaw indicates that it's by the plan and void by special permit.
So, I mean, it is what it is, and we're going to do it the same way we do any other one.
I provided a draft legal notice. That needs to be the trivia by Friday. The applicant will hopefully be for Thursday, I'm sorry, it needs to be the Thursday. I think technically Friday is acceptable. We've always advised Thursday, so we just need to confirm that draft and get it into final mode at this point. We have TRC. Comments were supplied by the conservation department, building, planning, fire. I think it was a really good discussion. Again, the reason for holding off on some of this additional material was to incorporate some of those comments. That meeting was held on May 11. So if you'd like, Dan Leary is here to provide the conceptual plan.
Okay, good. Laura, yours.
Good evening. My name is Dan Leary, and this is Rick Waite with Meridian Associates, Site Civil Engineer. So thank you for having us back. We spent the last several months looking very closely at the opportunity for solar at Osgood Landing and in looking and hearing the community's thoughts over the last year. We've put together a plan which we think would be beneficial. Frankly, we think this is a win-win. This is a project that can be, if it can be permitted, can be built this year and would provide substantial benefit to the town and to the property. So one of the main topics for discussion besides sort of presenting what the project would look like, because I understand this is just a discussion, we're not yet at the, at the point of presenting the full plan, we're very interested in feedback about how to get from here to permits in hand, namely because we have a really critical deadline as always. This project needs to be turned on by the end of the year for the, for the sort of the financial benefit to be realized for all the parties that would be involved. So here we are in June, or, okay, it's May, but I think it's June, and we have about 17,000 solar panels that we're still proposing to put on site. And we really would appreciate your feedback about how to get from here to there. So I'll just give a quick overview of what we're talking about with this scope. So in this scope, it's still a six-megawatt project. Approximately 2.4 of those megawatts would be on the roof and, and the other 3.6 would be on the ground. A key part of putting these on the ground includes demolition, site improvements to the property that we think, again, is part of a win-win scenario. On the south side of the property is a lot of antiquated equipment used to support the manufacturing facility that's no longer in use, and it's, it's not serving a purpose other than to sort of use up land. And we believe that by demolishing that and relocating the tractor-trailer school to that area, that we can create opportunity to put solar almost exclusively to the west and a little bit to the northwest of the building and keep it all completely out of, sort of, out of the front of the building. So this, this plan has no carports. It's just ground-mounted solar and roof-mounted solar. Rebecca, if it would be possible, on that thumb drive, so we have, we do have a couple of updated plans.
So Dan spoke to the roof piece. As far as the application for site plan, it's really for the ground-mounted, and the intent on the roof piece would be to proceed with the building permit department for that approval. And I didn't see any issue with it, but I just wanted to table it for the board. Dan and I had discussion related to the height of those on the roof. They would not exceed 18-inch height, and they wouldn't be visible for the ground, and I could annotate that within the building permit. It would still go through planning for signature, but it has been separated out of this application. Okay.
Thank you. So, so on that thumb drive, we have, there's a couple of files. There's a folder called Planning Board. 51716, there's a folder, and there is the...
Just one second.
Yeah, the plan.
Harry.
Oh, no, that's all right.
You said it was Planning Board?
Yes.
And then which file are you looking to display?
Take a look at that.
There's four of them.
Yes, M, very top one.
I don't know if I can get that onto the Chrome.
Okay. So this is where we print out copies, just in case. I'll pass these out in a moment.
I can get it if you give me a second.
Okay, thank you. So I guess as part of our discussion tonight, we do have a number of questions that have to do with how to best navigate the permitting process. Of course, we welcome any feedback on the, on the design and the layout as we have it. But as we talk about the project itself, we're proposing, keeping the roof part aside because it's just, I think is possibly a non-issue from a site plan perspective, the ground mount, which was formally proposed as a carport canopy, this ground mount is going to be ballasted, non-penetrating, non-disturbing, modular, and about waist-high. We went to great lengths to try and put in a system that would be able to be moved when there's a, there's a better use for that land. So this is, this is a system that can be put on the roof, which is one of the things we discussed in the past. So if there is a better opportunity for that land to put up a building, this could actually be relocated in, in modular, so. Perfect. Perfect. So the, the ground mount arrays that we're proposing are on the western side. Thanks, Rick.
Doesn't work.
Sorry. The visible lays. Good idea.
There's a, to the far, to the, to the left, which is the west.
Right there.
Yeah, perfect, thank. Is the Nets parking lot, the current Nets parking lot. So that area is proposed to be a ground mount system that's placed right on the pavement. Again, ballasted, non-disturbing system. The other ground mount is up to the north of the building, which is the same construction method, just placed on pavement. The other two red areas you see there are rooftop and really not the focus of tonight's discussion, I think, unless you have any comments. So this, this plan right here is what we're calling areas that we think would be the most, the areas that would be the simplest to permit and possibly the most expedient to permit. Additionally, we've proposed some other areas to the northwest side of the building, which we'll, I'll discuss that in a little bit. On the second slide shows an overview of what we're proposing to demolish. If you go down one, one page...
Okay, it's a large file. It's just going to take a while to move it around.
That's no problem. So in the red area below, this is essentially where we're proposing to relocate Nets. So in the middle of that is where you have the, the equipment that'll, that'll be demolished, a site that'll be repaved, and relocate area made available or relocate the tractor-trailer school. Just wanted to pass around a few images of what that looks like from the street level, if that's all right.
That means the same language?
Yes, I've got three copies of the exact same thing.
Sure. Just for the record.
So this is a photo taken from the eastern part of the parking lot. So if you were going to be walking into the town offices or something looking to the west, and on the, this is on the southeast side of that. Does anybody not know exactly where that's taken? I can go up there and point to the screen. I'll point anyways.
More recertification.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, so our first question is, with respect to demolition, does demolition of this equipment in the photograph require Site Plan Review, or is this a demolition permit, so separate from what we're going to be...
I don't think so, because if you were just demolishing it for the sake of demolishing it, it would never come to the planning board.
Is it disturbance in the acres?
Oh, an acre or more. It would constitutionally a disturbance. That's not an acre.
That's what I'm just asking. It's less than an acre for it.
Yeah.
So then, your current...
Yeah, I mean, I, frankly, I would be more, the only concern I would have, and I think it's out of scope for us, but if you're going to demolish it, make sure there's no nasty stuff in those buildings.
So I asked the building commissioner if his code would make sure that they oversaw license site professionals if they were required and all the certifications for hazardous material. He said they do. I don't think there's any type of stormwater structures here that would be impacted in this specific area. So I think, I'm not sure if you're going to still continue to talk about demolition in the rear.
Talk about that next.
Okay. But this area, I thought, was one that maybe be able to pull out a site plan review and be managed through the building department?
Yeah, the demolition. I mean, obviously, what happens after it's demolished and if it's, we want to look at it to the extent that if it has any drainage impact, we understand what that is, or if it has any impact on the flow of traffic through the property because you're going to, is there going to be any contention between the school and people entrance and egress? So that's, I think, what we, we want to still stay in scope.
Right. The future development or use of that area.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
The, the next major area for...
Pete, you had a question?
I'm sorry.
I think you mentioned that when you demolished here, you would be repaving.
Yes.
What are you repaving?
So that area is, so, so the area that's in the green block that's in the middle of the, the larger red area, that whole block would be paved, so it would be a continuous grade of parking, of parking lot, the, the grade would be continuous.
So the green repaved, not the red?
Just the green repaved, I'm sorry.
Looks proud to me.
The green, oh, red. Yeah. The top of the red.
Yeah.
The second major area for demolition that's, that's being considered is not shown on this, this plan for the moment, and maybe we should talk about that a little bit later. But that's the water treatment area, which is to the, to the northwest, and I'll pack around a couple of pictures of that as well.
Was that circled on the previous drawing? I thought it was.
I think it is highlighted there.
Do you...
Peter.
These particular drawings are laid out this way intentionally to talk about what we believe may be a pathway to permitting. So that, that's why we're going to kind of hit a few topics and then kind of wrap it up with, with the, with the drawings at the end. But this is, this is a second area. So this is, this whole block is mostly inactive and unused. It's, it's abandoned water treatment, water treatment.
I'm not following on this picture, whichever is.
So, yes.
Is it just this one? Is that the one?
Doesn't it?
Which area?
It's, it's, it's the whole, the whole block. It's not the rooftops that are immediately in front of you.
Okay, including these?
Yes.
It's the whole block?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so the area that's highlighted in blue is, 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 is this area back here, with the exception of possibly these two buildings. So, so these are areas that are largely, again, concrete sediment beds and remnants of a, a time gone past that no longer need to be there. We call this area Possible Phase 2. We're showing it on the area to be demolished because it's, I don't think anybody on this planet wants to see that still there. It would be a great place to put solar panels. Our biggest question is whether we actually have time to get this permitted and get that built by the end of the year because possibly unlike the, the south parking lot, there may be some more complexities to it. But we'll have to better understand that. So we're, we're interested in any of your feedback with respect to demolition of that area.
Well, what was treated there? It says treatment facility and tanks. What was treated there? And what was in the tanks? I mean, we're talking like...
Sewage.
Sewage.
They don't want treatment facility.
Well, I mean, it was, I mean, but Lucian did, and Bell Labs back in the day, there was a lot of stuff going on, but this was just sewage.
And part of those, that apartment is still functioning?
Right.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of infrastructure there, of which 95% of it's not... There's a lot of infrastructure there, of which 95% of it's not in use anymore, some of it is still in use, and we're not proposing to do anything. Regardless of what demolition we do, we're not gonna demolish the component that's still in use and supporting the property. I guess we bring this up because there is opportunity to make better use of that land, but we don't have a lot of confidence that it can be done in the time we need to do it, but that does not mean we want to --
It almost seems that this is not essential to this project. You could either do it as part of this project or not. Because you're not planning directly on using it for this project, because you're not proposing to put solar panels there. So is this just to preserve your flexibility for the future, or?
So what we're ultimately proposing is six megawatts that would be built in the orange areas. Now, if, you can see on the north parking lot, you know, we're taking up a considerable chunk of that parking lot that we'd rather not. If we had the ability to get that western treatment plant demolished and brought to basically a gravel surface at a reasonable time this year, we'd be looking to move a chunk out of that northern parking lot and put it back onto the, to that blue area.
So unlike the other stuff you're taking down, because it's basically the future arm of the tractor-trailer school, you're saying, in your ideal world, if you had time, you would take some of the stuff that's on the north and you would put it?
Yes.
So how, what rough, how would you, if you did it, how would you reconfigure it?
So we believe we can fit about 800, up to 800 kilowatts in that blue area that would be coming from the eastern side of that north, that north area, if that makes sense.
So you'd be walking it away from the street? You'd be pushing it further, it would start closer to the back?
Probably from the, yeah, we'd be looking to first create, you know, maintain as much active parking for the building as possible, and then also moving it up. So that building that's at the very top of that array is the substation. It's a massive substation. It's a 50-megawatt plant that supported, again, a day-gone past. It's very large, you wouldn't be building systems that big anymore, but it's there. It's relatively new, and we believe that, you know, trying, if we, ideally, we'd be keeping the panels to the south of that, and kind of marked off from the rest of the parking area.
If you were to move the 800 megawatts, is that what it was?
800 kilowatts.
Kilowatts, okay.
Yeah, that's alright.
800 kilowatts would fit into the blue area, is that what you're saying?
Up to 800 kilowatts.
800 would represent what percentage of the red area to the north of the site? How much of that red area is made up of the 800? Is it a quarter of it?
It's probably about half, roughly speaking. And I say up to 800, because maybe the demolition of this area is a little bit more complex, there's some things that are simpler and some things that are maybe more complex. So I'm being genuine when I say up to 800, it could be 400 by the time we do a full analysis and can get into it. But regardless, you can see the picture of what's there. It's antiquated and it's, it'd be a good place to park solar, it'd be a better place to park solar than in the parking lot, is the owner's feeling on it.
And the blue area is the area that would be demolished?
Yes.
But would the ground solar arrays go on both the blue area and potentially some area outside of the blue area? In other words, if you demolish the blue area, does that enable an area that's larger than the blue area?
The actual demolition plan for that blue area would consist of just the footprint of the buildings within it. So that blue area would be where the solar panels would be, the actual demolition area is a little bit smaller.
Yeah. When would you know, after you're demolished, of what would be the carrying capacity of that blue area? Like, how soon, would it be right at, as soon as you demolish it, you would know? Or would it be a month after? Or when would you know about how much you could put in the blue area?
Oh, we'd know well before we started. This is maybe, if I could just cut to the point, this is probably a question of special permit or not. If demolition of that falls into special permit, and we potentially have, you know, a sort of like a three to four a month, maybe best-case scenario with site plans, review special permit, we just might not make it. It's more of a timing question than --
But you said before, you said it could be up to 600. So my question is, when would you know if it's 300, 400, or 600?
I think it was up to 800, right?
Yeah, you said it was up to 800. So when would you know that? Because I thought I picked up, if it's up to means it's contingent on knowing something you don't know now, or, so is it 800, or is it not? If it's 800, then it's not up to 800, it is 800, I guess. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to understand your decision process, because the way you explained it, I thought what you were saying is, we'll tear the buildings down, and after we tear the buildings down, then we'll know for sure that we can do 800.
I don't think those were the complexities.
Yeah, and so that's, it's a little bit, it's either 800 or it's not.
What are the complexities?
That's a great question. That's the question we need to answer, what are the complexities? So on my side, this is why we're calling it Phase 2 at this point, because we don't know what the complexities are in their entirety, but let me go over what we think some of them are. There are utilities out there on the ground that are 100 years old, piping networks and whatnot, that at this time, we don't have knowledge of their whereabouts, so we're working on that. So if we were to try to file now, and I've got a couple other issues that I'll talk about, but if we were to try to file now on that, we certainly don't have the information to present to this board as to what all those existing conditions are and how we're gonna treat them. It is our intention, if we go forward on this area, to demolish most of it to official grade and come back in and gravel the area over. The second complexity is, what are the drainage considerations out there? There are probably a half a dozen or more catch basins, manholes, that are draining to certain areas that we're not sure of, would need to investigate. In our final grade, how that would change, we're all to the drainage patterns out there. On top of that, considering that we're probably within the wetlands jurisdiction on this piece, and not the others, because we've carefully moved the remainder of the orange area, red area, outside of all wetlands jurisdictions, the blue area most likely would trigger a wetlands file, filing and a filing under the stormwater management guidelines. All of that's gonna take us months to design and permit. Quite frankly, if you were to ask me, when would I know? It'd probably be six to eight weeks out from now, if we started studying it right now, that we would know what our capacity would be able to be put up there. Right now, I think we've got a, probably a 90% assurance of what we think we can get up there in six to 800 kilowatts, but we're not at 100%.
Yeah, but the good news is, if it was taken in a Phase 2 approach, and it just took longer, the ballasted system is easily relocatable to that area if?
I was gonna say, that seems to me to be the easiest, is assume you're not gonna do it, and then do it as Phase 2, you just move it.
Right, and that's why earlier I said, you know, separating out the demolition that Dan talked about previously on the south side of the building. I saw that as just a lot less complex, given the TRC meeting and conversations with Jennifer Hughes. And here, as Rex spoke to, there's drainage considerations, it would require a lot more review than, I think, the other side.
Yeah.
That just raises a question, though. I mean, I assume you have a time pressure based upon the state's cutoff period.
It's about 207 days.
Yeah. Why don't you just put the stuff on the roof now, if it's so easily moved?
Well, it's structural, you can't put that much on the roof, we've already gone over that.
We can't put six on the roof.
We can't?
No.
We would never have been here.
Where did that come from?
I just --
Probably about 10 times.
I can remember asking the question about a structural study on that, and was told that wasn't appropriate.
Because the building inspector handles that.
Well, yeah, and has the building inspector handle it.
So at this point, they have good confidence that they can do two or four.
But they haven't proposed putting six on the roof, that's --
No, but it would get us out from --
Well, if it was six on the roof, then they wouldn't come in front of the planning board at all.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Maybe they enjoy this.
Oh.
So this is what's being proposed.
If we had the ability to put all of it on the roof, we absolutely would have done that. I spent the better part of the winter up trying to find every humanly possible way I could to fit it on the roof, and it, because of the complexities of the roof, which are more complex than the treatment plan, it's unfortunately, but the good news is, we can fit 2.4 on the roof. I should say, the other part of that is that the owner's gonna be roofing almost 300,000 square feet of roof as part of this. That's a big revitalization of the plant, of the building, because those frankly are, they don't build roofs like that anymore. It's a very, very complex and expensive endeavor, this roof style. So that's the good news, is we got everything we could on the roof. And to Mr. Simon's point, this is, what we're proposing in red is a complete and buildable six megawatts, and what's in blue is, if the timing works out and we can, you know, sort of get the momentum in permitting to get there, because we do have a lot to do with permitting, if it's the fall and we have the ability, like Gene mentioned, to move some of that towards the end over to the west, that's exactly, that's exactly what our hopes are.
Right, you may have to do it with a separate permit, right?
I'm sorry, the demolition portion?
Yeah.
Yes. I would think if it was taken as a Phase 2 approach, it would be a separate filing.
So, I'm sorry, can you explain that?
If the demolition of this area in blue was to be taken as a Phase 2, that it could be a subsequent filing for that specific area.
Just to be clear, the solar portion of that would require not the demolition?
Well, the stormwater component, because it's --
Because of the demolition?
Right, because it would still be considered a site improvement, and there is a stormwater component there.
And it could add, because of the complexity and all the drainage impacts and everything else that we talked about, I think it would rise to that level. So it would be, yeah, a separate filing, and it would be, tear down the things, make the drainage work, and move some of the panels from where it was to where you're proposing to put them. It'd be pretty simple. You'd do it completely separately. And because if you're concerned about time, you don't wanna tie the two things together, because if you put all your eggs in one basket, it turns out it takes a lot longer, then you could be out of luck, not because of anything the planning board did at all.
Do you have any concerns regarding parking, given that they'd all be on the pavement there?
No.
Because now it's not cap water, so there's no parking under them anymore, it's, the spaces are taken up by these panels.
No, we don't. So the benefit of the ground mount system that we're proposing is that we don't have to disturb the parking spots underneath them, we're sort of parking a tenant on there that can be moved. So the best thing that happens to the property is a 500,000-square-foot tenant wants to move in and start manufacturing again. We've got the parking there and ready to go, we just have to put these, we're gonna redo the roof and put, you know, I, when I say we're going to, the roof would likely be redone, and we'd find a way to put the panels on the roof. So we're going to, we're adding expense to the project, and I'll show you pictures of what they look like, because this sort of answers the parking question. So this is the mounting system, there's two mounting, there's two sheets here, they're actually two different mounting system styles, one's a rooftop system and one's a ground mount. By the way, these are both manufactured in, or I should say, the headquarters of this company panel clause in the building, they do some manufacturing there, but mostly shipping and logistics. So the first product, which is called Polar Bear, is a very, that's the system that's very low to the roof, it's ballasted, and that's the rooftop system. The second system, which is called Panda Bear, is the short name for non-penetrating, non-disturbing, ballasted, ground mount system that can be moved when the use is better, but their marketing team called it Panda Bear. So.
When they say ballasted, it looks like it's just concrete blocks that you pick up?
It's concrete CMU, so it's taking a tray that's about this big and putting a couple concrete CMU blocks in it.
Okay, so they're very easy to move?
Very easy. And it's not just the mounting and the panels, but also, we're relooking at, we're going to go with a different inverter system. So rather than doing large central inverters, we're gonna do smaller module ones, that if we need to move a third of it to the roof, it's very easy to move a third of it to the roof. So we're taking, you know, it's a more expensive project, but to the owner, it's well worth it, because everybody would like to see a better use for that land out back in the future. So with respect to parking, the Panda Bear system, you, once it's moved, the parking can be restored in the future, but today's parking requirements, I think we estimated that is under I-2, it was around 1,400 parking spaces for the 50-something companies that are currently in the building. There's over 6,000 parking spaces on the property, a good number of those are being used for other tenant activities, like the truck driving school, there's a container operation, mobile mini out back, and, you know, so it would be another --
So when you come in, you should have all those numbers, okay, exactly, you know, how many spaces you're gonna lose by putting the tractor-trailer school there, and by any of the other things where you're putting the units you should, it'll be, once the project's done, how many parking spaces are there? I know you'll demonstrate there's a lot more than the minimum, but you have to do it, you have to give us the exact number, not just a swag.
So, understood. So the --
Dan, these are just sitting on the ground?
Yes.
And?
Engineered to do that.
Engineered to sit, in what type of wind?
The 105 mile an hour wind load we have here, times a safety factor of 1.4 to the International Building Code Chapter 16 standards, wind tunnel tested by the authorities and the top North American authorities on wind tunnel testing.
And?
Yes, sir.
So that's more than 150?
Oh.
Talking about 150.
Yeah, above 160 something?
Okay, because tornadoes can hit 150 pretty easily.
The panels will still be there.
Well, yeah, I don't want those things flying into my house, maybe you do.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with respect to, maybe going back to nets, in order for this solar project to happen, this, sort of our second major question is, okay, so we've, we're gonna demolish that equipment on the south side of the property, if the next step for us is to repave it, so there can be a continuous parking area, does the repaving of that require site plan review, special permit?
What's out there? Is there anything else out there on that parking lot?
Well, see, here's the thing, is demolition is fine, but the two things you're gonna have to demonstrate to us, at some point in time, is, after you've taken the thing down, is the drainage gonna work? And that may be fairly simple. And is, by putting the tractor-trailer school there, is it going to create site access problems? And how are you gonna, you know, how are you gonna wall it off from the other people? Or is there typically other parking over there? We have to look at that.
Yeah, so the path to the loading bay gets altered somewhat from what it is today.
Yeah.
So to your point, there's some storage containers and things located around there, but for the most part, it's parking right up to those, and on the rear of them, it's a lot of the truck access to the loading area, which will still be, I think it's in that green line, it's just gonna kind of dogleg in after nets is moved, and we talked about some screening and things around the school to separate it from parking.
They're gonna need lighting, they're gonna need --
So the stormwater piece for paving, I mean, would you require the pavement to So the stormwater piece for paving, I mean, would you require the pavement to be... No tar or coal-based pavement here, given the stormwater system that's there today?
You know, this is actually a site that would be very helpful to have a site block on, you know, all these areas.
Well, I mean, that's more the stuff in its totality. So, again, I understand what you're trying to do. I think we're giving you... We're saying demolition, okay. If you want to go get the building demolished, go right ahead and do it. But once you get past the building being demolished, you have to demonstrate to the planning board that the drainage is going to work and that the site, the way you're going to set it up, works. And that's what the site plan review process is intended to do. That's exactly what it's intended to do. So...
Okay. Thank you. And we understood, we took notes. So what would be required? So I guess the follow-on question to this, then, is frankly the big question. If, understanding that we're relocating a tenant activity and we're going to be improving the infrastructure to support that, there's considerable... There may be some... There's construction as part of that. So now I want to ask about what was in red before, the Phase 1 solar panels. Rebecca, if you could go back up to the top. So the Phase 1 solar panels, we have gone to great length to... I won't repeat all those words, but to make this non-disturbing, non-penetrating, to the point where I think by some definitions, this is not even construction on most of it, it's an activity. And our belief in that the way... Where we located them outside of jurisdictional areas, we did that intentionally. Of course, we'd love to fill in some more of this space. There's a reason why they're sort of drawn the way they are. But in this plan, we're avoiding jurisdictional areas that would trigger some stormwater requirements. And our belief is that this layout, and whether it's the ground mount or heck, you know, it wouldn't be unreasonable for us to just take the roof mount system and put that on the pavement as well, if that's what it took, because it's just so simple.
So I guess where you're going. I'm not sure what your ask is here.
So would we require anything more than a building permit?
No, that's what the whole thing of site plan review is. Don't even go another second on that. We're not going to let you... Why are we going to have site plan review at all, then? You're not... For the ground mount ones, you've got to get site plan review done before you get approved. That's my opinion. I don't know how anybody else on the board feels, but I don't see how you...
Well, the fire department spoke to access... I mean, these are all going to be fenced-in locations. The fire department needs access around it.
Yeah.
I forget the degree... I think it was over 360 feet spread this way. It's probably close to double this way. So if somebody was to be hurt in the middle of that, how does the fire department get to that person? Those kind of things came up, so I'm not quite sure.
Sure. So I guess my question is, and certainly we're answering all those questions with the departments, whether it was site plan or not, every public safety's got to be familiar with what we're doing and have input into the accessibility. But I guess my question is, what part of 8.3 discusses or requires the site plan so that we're better prepared to come back and address it? Is it...
Do you want to bring up the...
Is it the stormwater?
It's the site improvement that could have impacted traffic circulation, signage. I don't have it in front of me, but maybe read number three.
Because, I mean, certainly if there was a way to address that with the design, you know, to avoid that issue, we believe that we... Stormwater was probably the biggest one, because we're not changing the circulation.
Basically, yeah. I don't know where you're going with it, but it sounds like you basically want to waive site plan review. And as far as I'm concerned, the answer's no. And we're willing to expedite the thing, but basically, I think what you're asking us is take the panels on the ground out of scope. And the answer's no. Why have site plan review then? I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I mean, why wouldn't we be even bothered to have site plan review if we weren't going to look at this stuff?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be... I only ask because it seems like that's been the precedent and possibly in the town with respect to other sites of...
No, we've never done anything close to this, ever. So, I mean, you know, we're willing to be reasonable, we're willing to be flexible. Basically, I think what you're doing is you're asking us to waive everything, and the answer's no.
What is the best way forward? Are there... Or I should say, are there any other comments related to the design that would help us move this from A to B the fastest at this point?
I think you've got a good proposal. I think the concept you've got's a lot better than what you had before. When you laid the thing out, I think you laid it out with a lot of clarity, as you're saying, this is what we're going to do. If you start circling the building from, you know, what you're going to tear down to where you're going to put the tractor-trailer school, to what you're doing in the back and where you located, what you're going to do at the back. And, you know, the blue stuff, you can just say that's an optional second phase, but this is what we're proposing, and this is what we're asking to get permitted. And, you know, I don't think it's super complicated, but like Jean said, the very first question we're going to ask, you know, is part of this, is how you... Like, are you going to put a fence up around it? I mean, it's not even clear to me what you're going to do, and how is it going to impact traffic patterns through the whole site? Those are things that we're going to ask.
Yes, yes, there'd be a fence, six-foot-tall fence required by the National Electric Code. Again, with respect to the circulation, is we believe that where we place them does not impact circulations for emergency access or otherwise. In fact, by putting them there, the fences, we're specifically trying to eliminate public access to any of that and keep the circulation up in front of the building.
Then that means it's not going to take us very long. I mean, that's what I mean. That's... We'll go through, we'll look at it, you'll give your answers, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, the fire department, if you comment, I mean, these are just normal steps, but if everything's up to speed, then we'll go with speed.
I mean, if you had the words you said and a flow pattern, that would be... Make it pretty...
Great. So would it be reasonable for us... So these two drawings are laid out sort of this way intentionally. Would it be reasonable for us to separate these as two individual projects? We... My feeling, and please tell me if I'm looking at this the wrong way, is that because of the way that we're proposing to put the panels just right on the asphalt, and yeah, there's some, you know, I understand circulation and wayfair, but we believe that that is probably a less complex set of questions than maybe some of the things that might have to be done with respect to repaving and, you know, where the nets would be going. My client, you know, as part of putting the project together, there's a lot of equipment and material that's got to start to flow if there was, you know... So weeks... I guess my point here is that weeks really matter to this project. If there's a way to get to yes on the solar component fastest, I think that that would be very beneficial while doing the repayment and relocation... I should say, the repayment aspects of the cell parking lot.
But you don't have to actually do the work. You're going through an approval process, and we'll approve the thing, you know, based on what you've proposed, subject to certain conditions. So I think you're conflating what's going to happen after the approval with the actual approval.
Are you ready to submit a building permit application? Do you have the requirements for the roof modules?
Nearly. We're just finishing the engineering on that.
Okay. Because I would assume you'd want to get that equipment ordered as fast as you could to...
Oh, yes.
Get that piece up there. I mean, that's...
Sure. Sure. I mean, but with respect to the site plan review special permit process, it could... If I understand it correctly, it could be months past our hearing dates before, you know, we get to the point, and then there's appeal periods. We could miss it on that.
Well, except for your project, that we've done in the past that had exceptional reasons for the length of time, go look at any site plan we've ever done and see how long it's taken. Tell me what the longest one is. I mean, you know, if you do your preparation, you do your homework, and you do the things that we ask, it gets done pretty quick.
Yeah. I think when you carve out the actual meetings with content, in the past, I mean, I think there was four hearings that we got through for a much more significant impact project.
If I could just maybe shed some light, and I'm just trying to shed light here, not argue or debate the point. The solar Phase 1 on the west and the north, we believe are fairly easy to permit with this board. They're not very complex at all. The demolition area, the nets, and that piece of the permitting, we don't want to hold up the solar piece.
The nets is which?
The most southern demolition area that we're going to repave.
And you both said we would separate that demolition out.
You said you could start an application.
No, no, but if it's part of the site, the special permit, the site plan special permit, if all of this is linked together under one application, we're afraid that...
You don't have to do any application for demolition. You just have to apply for demolition permit.
No. Understood. You have said several times, though, that you want to see what we're doing with nets under it.
Well, we have to know what's... I mean, it's possible that we could condition certain things if you don't know what the answer to them is until after you've done the demolition. That's the thing we could make something subject to. But the point is, is part of, you know, is part of the special permit process, the site plan review process, we're going to want to know if the tractor-trailer school is operating into that area. How is it going to operate it? Is there going to be any barriers, a separation between that part of the parking lot and the rest of the parking lot?
Exactly. Exactly my point, and several other issues, to be quite frank with you, that with...
But that's part of the process.
No, no. We're not looking to waive that condition. We're asking, can we separate them out as two separate special...
You can make three applications.
To applications.
Four applications.
As two separate applications, because time is of the essence in the solar.
If you wanted to do that, you could have made a special permit application for the tractor-trailer school completely separate from everything else, if you wanted to do that. But you didn't. So now you've got one that includes everything.
If you were to start demolition of that area tomorrow, how long do you foresee it will take? A couple of months? Because your hearing opens June 7th. It's only two weeks away. So how long would it take to demo that area?
A month.
A month. Okay.
Yeah. Again, I may be misunderstanding, but to us, it makes sense to put this in as a couple projects, even if we have to update the notice, which still needs to be filed this week, because the...
You can't... You're already filed. You can't unfile. You file for a site plan review. If you want to file for a different site plan review, you have to file it separately. It's a separate application, which you haven't filed yet.
I haven't seen anything on this jump drive here, but the filing was for a 3.6-megawatt ground-mounted solar system at this location. It didn't go into detail in relocating nets or anything to that effect. It was, you know, the narrative, all I received is that to set this application page. So they didn't get into the details of what was going to be demolished.
Well, it's being proposed. I mean, yeah.
But the supplemental material that supports that application is here, which I imagine gets into the demolition area and relocating nets and...
Essentially, the two drawings that you have on the screen may be looked at as cover drawings for two different applications, the way we've drawn it up. Again, the main reason for doing this has... is 100% based on timing and the need that we can't have the site plan review special permit for the southern parking lot area for the repavement and whatever else is going to have to happen.
So from your perspective, when you were to start construction on the panels...
For these ground mounts, we would be looking to start this... The first panels hopefully will be showing up on site July 15th, and we'd be looking to begin construction there thereafter. Most of it, we anticipate, will be on the roof early on. But that's a lot of panels to put down.
When are you going to come back? When are you going to start on the ground stuff? When would you like to be done and start? What's your plan to be done by the end of the year?
Well, on a normal construction schedule, you'd be starting it right now. We don't have that. If we were to get started on July 15th with the ground mount areas that we... And if we had some optimism on the north treatment area there, you know, that would be about the right timing for us to get everything in the ground. So when we say it's got to be turned on by the end of the year, construction's got to be done by, certainly by Thanksgiving, in order for National Grid to allow us to turn it on, so that there's a lot that has to happen in the...
So, working back from Thanksgiving, how much time? Again, I don't know these things. I mean...
It's all of it in a day. I don't know any better way to say it.
I'm glad you've got all these tasks outlined in the length of time.
Well, I mean, we're talking about several dozen workers, 30, 40 electricians, you know, 20-something roofer, a lot of things that have to happen.
What's the order on this? I mean, you have to get nets off the back before you can start the back. So you need to get the building demo and get that section rebuilt to move nets, correct?
Right. So, okay...
So sequence it for us.
So we're going to go pull the building permit for the roof and get that going. Let's just maybe not talk about that now, right? That's not what you care. The demolition for the south side parking lot, we're going to... We've got a contractor ready to go under agreement to go pull the permits and get started on that right away. Our hopes is that we would be through the permitting process by the time they've completed the demolition, for that area to be improved, because it's got to be paved. We're going to put up a barrier around it. We're going to do the traffic, the flow patterns, make the dock accessible, and everything is part of that. And we cannot start putting down solar panels in that area until they've moved their operation. I think moving their operation, it takes just a few days. So it's into the later part of the summer. You know, that's why I say it's probably midsummer, it's probably the end of July, ideally, before we move them. But our concern, again, is through the permitting process, can we get there by mid-July?
What are you doing on the west side? You missed that. That's what I mean. You don't have a...
Well, we can't start building the west side until nets is moved.
But when you come in...
Why is the west impact nets? West is...
Because nets is there. Yeah, nets is there.
You missed the north. But would that be done?
That... Most of it would be... That's where the ground crew would start working on it as soon as that was permitted, because again, by the time I think that this is permitted, we'll start putting that. Now, they won't finish at all, because hopefully we'll be deep into trying to permit the treatment area for demolition and reuse. So, you know, those are the panels. There's medium voltage work. There's a lot of work we have to do.
We... I think at this point, I think we... I think at this point, I think we've got to cut the discussion off, because I think we're sort of, frankly, we're designing the project for you, and we've never done this before. I mean, I've been on this board for 30 years, and, you know, I don't think I've ever been in the situation, you know, where we've tried to basically plan the project for the applicant. And I don't think we're going to, it's, I think you've got to come in next week with all the stuff that you come in, or two weeks or whenever it is, with all the stuff you normally come in with, you have a pretty good idea of what we want to see. You've got to explain, as Lynn said, the phasing of the timing, the sequencing of everything. You know all the issues. And, you know, the intent of the meetings like this is just to give us an advance notice so we know what's there, so we don't ask as many questions in the first meeting. And we're not going to design the thing for you. And, you know, we've pretty much told you everything. So I think at this point, I mean, I think we've got to declare victory and move on, frankly, because this has been, you know, we've been talking for 45, 50 minutes, and I'm not sure what more you went for on this. We're not going to waive site plan review for any part of the project. We'll work with you on the demolition, and we'll even work with you on paving of that stuff down there. But everything else has got to fall within our scope.
If this was approached as Phase 1 in the red, does that keep you out of Conservation Commission jurisdiction? 100% out of them?
So, we appreciate you coming in.
Just one more question on the equipment. How do you connect them? Is that, do you have underground wiring?
Everything, everything is attached to the equipment that's above the pavement, so it's conductors that are attached to the mounting system that's in chases.
And at some point, it's got to go to the collector?
Yeah, it goes to medium voltage, and then the medium voltage will tie into the substation up on the north side.
Underground?
We'll be using overhead lines. There'll be one section that's an overhead line that's the last leg of it. It's 23,000 volts, 23 KV line, and then the rest of it will be on the ground.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else do we have?
Just the regular meeting minutes, and then we have executive session on the agenda to approve executive session meeting minutes as well.
This will take five seconds.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 3 and May 10 meeting minutes.
All in favor? All right. So, can we read the thing?
I'm going to get board down to executive session for confidential communications to discuss executive session meeting minutes only, and not to discuss litigation, and not to return...